... board of appeals, my name is Harvey Aitken, I'm the chairman, to my left vice chair, Mr. Guevas. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, to my right, the clerk, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a pager, please put it on silent or vibrate, not to interrupt the meeting. If anyone wants to speak, please step outside. If you're going to speak, speak loud because there's no microphone system. Guevas, do you have a name? Anyone going to speak tonight to testify?
Stand up.
Anyone who wants to testify, please stand up, raise your right hand. Please swear to the health of the country, help the God. Thank you.
Is that a motion to waive the reading of August 18th, August 9?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to waive the reading of the minutes of August 9.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over. Just so everyone knows, there's only four members here tonight, you have a right to continue your case. You have to have all four votes, unless you have a finding. If you have a finding, you can have three out of four. So, there's a fifth person, a sixth person didn't make it, one had a baby, and I don't know where the other one is. So, what I'll do is I'll call your name first, Kristen Reed. Would you like to hear your case tonight, or would you like it moved? It's up to you.
I can hear you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you want to hear the case tonight, or have it moved? You have to have all four votes tonight.
Uh, I'll hear the case tonight.
107 Cross Street, Song Tong. Do you like to hear it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Anthony Norman, 25 Farrow Street.
Yes.
Yes. Scott Levine, 17 Wompita.
Yes.
Okay. Is that a motion, please? I have a letter here for 1604-5, William Kylie, 13 Dundee Road. Is anyone here for that case tonight? We just got a letter a few minutes ago, the clerk just got a text, and want to put that off to September 27. Is that a motion, please?
This is the chairman, now number 16, 04-5, William Kylie, for variance of some of the existing lot, two house law compromises under 13 Dundee Road, please give it a continue to...
September 27.
September 27.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over.
Excuse me, I got a question about that. How many times, this is the second time I've taken a night off for work for this guy, how many times, chances of you get this question?
Well, the guy asked if he could continue with the letter just came.
Well, a letter just came, so what does that mean?
That means he's coming September 27.
So, it's a tactic of his to do some places...
This is the second time, you've always given people two times. No. Things happen. Well, I know it's frustrating, but what can I do?
Why you have to continue it?
Why does they ask to be continued?
So, this is the, so it's, now what happens the next time?
We'll hear the case. I'll give a hard beer grunt. Third time, third time, that's it.
And what was the date on that again?
September 27.
September 27. Same time?
Same time.
Okay.
And it'll probably be the first case.
Well, it's not a question of when they come, it's just unfortunate, you know, all of us are coming in.
It is, it is.
You know, so I think it's something on his part to frustrate all of us, so we give up because we're all against it.
Right.
And it's something, I'm sure you've seen it before, I know you can't admit to that, but I'm sure that's the case.
I don't know that, I really don't.
I know, I know you don't, but that's obviously my...
When we see that, we see a lot of things.
No, I ain't something, I'm not taking blame, I'm not taking it out on you, but...
I understand.
You know, it's frustrating.
Oh, I would be frustrated too, I would too.
I am frustrated.
And if you can't make it, write a letter, just like being.
Well, I'd rather be...
Really, I know it's bad to see you here, but it is just the same.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, bud. This is our commissioner, head of inspection services, Jay Duker. I have another letter here, 1603-7, name Song Tong, Pozzo Architects, 45 Shands Street. Are they here?
Mr. Chairman, may I? The architect called earlier, he'd like to postpone again for two months. Margaret is also, Margaret La Forest of White Council is also asking for a continue.
Well...
The owner is nowhere to be found right now, and the real estate agent is going to try to contact him. He has made some attempts to get some permitting in place for the demolition of the structure, but we feel we'll be able to reach him in the next week.
Thank you. I'll tell you, frustrating, I live down there, and it's rodents running in and out of that place, and I'll tell you, I wish the guy was here, because I'd give him a piece of my mind. It's just rainfall, what he's done. He wants a variance to build, God bless him, showing his good faith. Is that a motion, September 27, please? Shands.
This is 37, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, matter of 16, 03-7, Bay Palm, Font, 40, architects for variance tomorrow, the same existing single-family home, garage, construct two, single-family dwellings, premises number 45, Shands Street, Quincy, I make a motion to extend hearing to September 27.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over. And another letter here, West Street Properties, it's from a neighbor, and I guess they were talking.
I have a little attorney.
Anyone want to move that to September 27? This is the second one, the third one's going to be a failure. Is that a motion, 1647?
Any other questions?
You will in one minute. 1647.
Yeah, case number 16, 04-7, West Street Properties LLC, for variance, finding to remove the existing two-family home, replacing with eight-town house-style units, on the premises number R264, West Street, Quincy, I make motion for a variance on September 27.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over. Sir?
Yes, hi, my name's Tom Kelly, and I represent the voter on that project. Send me the request, when did you get it, and how many requests has this been?
Second.
Second one.
We asked for a continue, and he's asking one now.
I guess why you're asking?
Because I asked, because I want to know what was going on with this property on the left.
Okay.
Because someone said they owned it, he said he owned it.
Okay, okay. All right, that's the 27th you said?
27th September.
Thank you.
You vote. On the new business case number 16051, Christine Reed, for variance to construct a second-story addition on the premise of 59 Shands Street, the applicant and their representative here.
Yep.
Please step forward, state your name and address, for record.
Owner of property, Christine Reed, at 59 Shands Street.
All right, why don't you tell us exactly what you wanted?
Um, so seeking variance for a second-floor addition in my house, it'll be a master bedroom suite, currently I only have 20 and change feet of frontage, and need a 25, go boy, variance. So, I'm here, I received verbal recommendation, and I have another written support by a neighbor, current voter, for this, this is my second addition that I sought variance on, and the first one apparently went off about a inch, so I'm here again, so I'm on the first time.
We're on, it said the existing deck to be removed, what's going on?
That's, that's my, that's the plot plan from the prior addition, so as you can see, this was the existing house, there was a deck that was on, that was the existing deck, this is now the addition that the prior variance was sought for. So, that deck was removed in order to put the new room on, the new room on, and the...
So, this is an old, you didn't get a new one, this is the old?
Yeah, it was, it wasn't that long, but, no, it was only, it was 2001, and the second-floor addition will be over the existing original home, not over the addition that was placed two years ago.
But this is an old one, that's why it's all that.
Yeah. I was hoping I had...
Say something.
Exactly.
Exactly. I have no questions, I look at the plan. Yeah, I have any questions? Anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in support? Anyone want to speak in support, first call, second call? Third call closed.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, uh... Yeah, this is a motion, I'm sure if there are a lot of...
The letter here from the DPW says, we have the developer's project and have no comments. Is there anyone undecided or against this project? Anyone close? Undecided? First call, second call? Third call closed. Is that a motion, please?
Matter of 16, 051, Kristen Reed, for variance, to construct a second-story addition on the premises number 59 Shands Street, Quincy, I make motion for a variance.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over. Thank you. Further on the new business case number 16052, Song Tong, our special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing single-family home, construct a two-family home, and premise number 107 Cross Street. Hold on one minute. Name and address, please.
My name Thomas. Thomas Williams, I'm a lawyer in Quincy, as it is, I represent Song Tong, in reference to the raising of a single-family house, and making a two-family house in 107 Cross Street. I have with me tonight Jerome Dixon, he's the architect that designed the new house, and he has a plan for the new house, to show the board. We are here for a variance because Mr. Tong, which is in the blue lot right here, has 44-foot frontage. He meets all the other zoning requirements to build a two-family house. This lot is in a business B zone, although it's in a business B zone, it's located in a location that you would never really use it for a business. Horizon owns this property right here, and this is out of the southeast expressway, so there's no, there's no access for anybody to ever go into any business there. So, it's a single-family house, the single-family house was built in the 1890s, and it's in quite a durable condition, and it has no parking. The house is in such bad condition that I had the building inspector down there, Kathy Nugent, and she would agree with myself that it would be a waste of money trying to fix the house, because the houses are quite, it's all watered out, and so a new house must be put there. So, the question is, is whether or not to put a one-family or a two-family, this is the home, we'd like to put a two-family house, and the architect, Jerome Dixon, that designed a very beautiful home. We have 44-foot frontage, and in the new home, we're going to have a, two garages, which will each hold two cars apiece, so there will be parking for, covered parking for four cars, and we're going to have a driveway that would service both garages, then you could put another car in the driveway. So, technically, we're taking a lot of land and seeing a thing that has zero parking, and we're going to make parking for six cars. The driveway is going to be a stone dust, and the entire living space on the new house is going to be above the floodplain, and the architect is going to talk about that, so it's because the existing house is below the floodplain. And so, we're looking for a variance, two variances, well, actually one variance, for to use the 44-foot frontage, and the hardship is, is that's just the way the lot was cut. And we have other houses, on this map here, I have, in blue is the lot, Mr. Song Tong's lot, and in pink, they're all two-family houses. So, those, all the other ones are pink, are two-family houses, this is property, and this, I believe, is a big apartment house. So, the vast majority of houses, where they were, are already two-family houses, and this would be by far the most modern and expensive and better home that they would have shipped right out of the whole area, and it'd be beneficial. So, let's say it's only because everything else here complies with the two-family house, and we will be taking away a life for the city and making it better. And as far as the floodplain issues, the architect, Jerome Dixon, will be heard of that. So, I want to turn it over to Jerome, he can show what his, the building's going to look like, but I wanted to just show a general scope of what the area looks like, to show that it pretty much is an area that's all two-family house type.
How's the William? It's just going to be owner-occupied, so...
He's going to live here, this is going to be an investment, or...
He's going to have his mother-in-law in one, and he's going to rent the other.
He's not renting, he owns it.
Right, right, but he will rent it off to somebody else, so he's going to own the building, have his mother-in-law live in one.
So, he's just using it for investment?
Right.
Hello, I'm Jerome Dixon, I'm the architect of this project. The building itself is proposed to be completely within setbacks required by some, so it's fully compliant in that sense, I believe, on the attorney, that's already explained that our issue was frontage on this particular lot, but we've paid particular attention to respecting all of the other rules in town, that has given us an interesting footprint to work with. The residence is actually going to be three levels, the first level is technically a basement because of the FEMA floodplain requirements, something that I understand changed recently in Quincy, so this lot was caught in a really unusual situation. That means that we don't have any real living space at the lower level. We have cars, concrete construction for the lower level, for the walls, so that if a flood ever came, the upper structure is totally protected. The main living begins at the second level, which is technically the first floor, and then there are bedrooms at the third level. This is broken into a couple of units. Our solution is rather unique in that we were able to get the, we were able to get a couple of cars in a garage, and these will be tandemly parked, in other words, end-to-end inside the garages on both sides. So, we have a really exceptionally long garage on the left, and one that's a little tighter on the right, but it gives us sufficient space. Actually has four vehicles within the structure. As we go up in the structure, you access this door, a small enclosed heated entryway, and stair that leads to the next level of this house. On the main level, the first floor level above the garage, the stair arrives to the landing, it has kitchen, dining, and family, pretty much in an open plan, a fairly contemporary idea. Above that, we have bedrooms, so you will see three bedrooms on the left, and we have two bedrooms on the right-hand here, and a total of five bedrooms. We have more than adequate bathroom facilities and storage and all the usual amenities. The exterior of the unit will actually be fairly traditional materials, some buttboard siding, trim boards, and classic details, so nothing out that would really stick out in that really respects the type of construction that's in that neighborhood. Thank you.
After the paving, I'll leave you in case.
Directly off of the street.
Yeah.
These are straight in, so looking at the floor plan, you're coming straight in the front of the unit. I'll take my stylize, so that's coming in here. So, we're not doing, we're not doing paving, we're doing stone dust immediately in front of this, so that we get the absorption of water, go back into the ground, as opposed to doing permeable paving. So, that's occurring here. So, you have one pretty simple square unit, and then because of the setbacks, you put this very interesting-looking second unit. That's what we call an interesting... Yeah.
Waiting on the walkway. Any questions?
I have a question.
I'd like to know, if you've got a landscape out the back end, I know it's pretty messy up there, I don't know what it looks like.
The intent is to get it all cleaned up. It has some lawn area, but then it immediately goes into cattails and wetlands back there.
What's beyond, I didn't go beyond.
The power station sits immediately to the right of this, so all those transformers and wires...
How about the back?
Directly straight behind this appears to be what is titled marsh, I'm not an expert on environment, but it's all natural growth, so that won't be touched. But it does have room for a lawn, and we'll be doing plantings, in the traditional garden.
All right, thank you.
The wetland back there.
Question for you, regarding the height of the building and the water table there, how much did the water table affect the way you start the foundation, and how high up the buildings might go?
The actual floodplain is about 36 inches above the road lane. So, if you imagine walking through the neighborhood next time, many of the houses have an issue because of this redefinition of the floodplain. The original house, one of the reasons it's coming down was not only that it was in poor repair, but to work on it, technically under the new rules, the owner would have had to have elevated it four to five feet up out of the ground. Obviously, in a structure that old, it really wasn't going to happen. It makes a lot more sense to come back building you and respect all the rules, so we built it up. Our foundation walls are all about three, three-and-a-half feet above street level, it's all concrete, so if it floods, the water doesn't disturb that, the garage doors allow water to come and go as it should for flood relief, and then the primary structure is completely out of the water.
Do you have anything in the ground for discharge at all for that area?
No, there's no underground structure for discharge. It remains pretty much equal to what was there before. This house is only about 20% different from the original footprint.
Yeah, this one. You have a question?
No.
Ask the council?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone that'd like to speak in favor, first call, second call? Third call closed, I have a letter here from the DPW. "We review this middle of the developer's project, that comments are as follows. Specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the developer. Two. Provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout, utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three. Explain how surface runoff will be discharged in trees and floor. Install survey monuments to dominate the public right-of-way. Monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five. Provide dimensions and grades for paving area and all right-of-way entrances. Six. Upon completion of this project, as-built plan showing all utilities, building foot room, preference bounds, benchmarks, define the total site facilities. Right-of-way needs to be submitted along with a digital file. These as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor." Anyone that's closed around the side? Closed around the side, first call, second call? Third call closed. I have a letter here from the council, and here's what it was. "Dear Chairman Aitken, case number 16052, 107 Cross Street, I received a zoning board of appeals application and supporting documentation in case number 16052, 107 Cross Street. Song Tong requests for variance and finding to allow the demolition of the current home and rebuild the two-family dwelling 107 Cross Street. I am writing you to express my strong concerns to this project. The applicant has yet to reach out to me to discuss the proposal. As a result, I have not had an opportunity to review any plans or communicate with the affected neighbors. Therefore, I am requesting that this matter not be voted on until the residents have been made aware of this proposal and had a reasonable opportunity to voice their concerns or requests. Brian Talmucci, work squad for council." And, I mean, we'll give him two weeks, and just go back and go down, if he's fit to do it. If he's got the money, make it really long enough, construction times, you know? Not to anybody, and he had summer off, I know, but you get an application, you can make a phone call too.
Thank you.
So, with that, council, I'm just going to call it two weeks. Give the council a call, just tell them we can put her off till...
September 13.
13. Got it right?
Thank you.
Can the word make more...
Thank you. And you can give me his, give him a note, travel. And this matter, 16052, Song Tong, for specific floodplain and variance, the law for this existing single-family home, and the existing two-family home, on the premises number 107 Cross Street, Quincy.
Thank you, continue hearing this September 14. Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close, come on over. Well, we'll come up, but yeah, I'll give you one, I'll give you one. Case number 16053, Anthony Norman, for final construction, second story, the front setback on premise 25 Farrow Street, the applicant and their representative here.
Yes, sir. Anthony Norman, 25 Farrow Street, is my wife Michelle, who's the owner of the house. Can she tell us what you'd like to do?
So, we are looking to add a second story to our existing one block, Farrow Street, Quincy. We have a growing family, so we're looking to extend from a two-bedroom, one-bathroom to a four-bedroom, two-and-three-quarter bath.
Hold on a minute, my husband's talking, sorry. Being rude, but...
It doesn't last long enough.
We're going to call it tonight, big guy. I hate that, I didn't hear what you said.
So, we're looking to...
Look at Scott Omar.
Yeah, we're looking to add a second story to our two-bedroom, one-bath, one block, Farrow Street, Quincy, and increase it to a four-bedroom, two-and-three-quarter bath. We're looking for a finding today, so we have a letter from one of our voters that Anthony gave to us today in support of the project, and also communication with Ian Kay, our ward in the county council, with approval of him as well.
And you talked to council?
Yeah.
Yes, via email, I asked him to call me, but he emailed me, that's how we communicated. But yes, we had an email exchange, and he gave us that message.
Now, are you going straight up with this?
Straight up. We're not changing anything with the foundation, we're going to go on the existing foundation. We currently have an enclosed porch, which we're not going to go above, we're actually going to just, just the main house.
Leave that on the main.
Yeah, we're going to change it from an enclosed porch, just to like a open, you know, front and three quarters.
You like that, that's my class.
It's a much better curve of view.
I don't like too close a porch.
Yeah, no, so...
Any questions in the applicant?
I can, that doesn't matter.
Hey, Mr. Duker.
Yes, Mr. Congress, Margaret La Forest of White Council, reached out to me late this afternoon.
Yeah, that's Wompita.
Oh.
This is Ian Kay.
Wompita.
Okay, she's got the letter.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's the, that's the one, that's how, that's the one, that's the one.
Sorry, Mr. Duker.
That's okay.
I'm sure she's happy with it.
She just loves this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. You two can have a seat.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Blass, I'm the owner of 31 Farrow Street, I'm a director of the voter, to Michelle and Anthony's home, and we, I would just like to point out, they're the only home on the street that's still a single-story, which I think is, it's just going to increase the value and the look on our street itself. The house I live in actually was also a single-story at one point, but the prior owners raised the roof, and it's really made an impact on the people who will stay in the neighborhood, including families like ours. I also used to be a zoning and land's attorney. I also used to be a zoning and land's attorney, so I can just say that this really comports with the, the guidelines and the, um, the ordinance of the city that it seems to follow mine, but what's something I think you want to prove, I don't represent them, just as I'm not their attorney, but...
It's, it's nice to have them hanging out from here.
We love the plans, they're great, they're great neighbors, we'd love to keep them, or anyone who wants to have a house like that, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, and that's from our butter on the other side, the red butter, is the letter from, um, Terry and Bob Hollins, here, blue arm, right hand side, okay, sorry.
I, uh, I have a letter here, we're writing this letter in support of our neighbor's plans for second story at twenty-five Farrell Street, Robin Theresa Mullins, twenty-one Farrell Street. A letter here from, uh...
It's an email exchange from our ward counselor, Ian King.
Yeah.
The last page just is the confirmation that...
Just, you have a question, if you expand the footprint, please?
Correct, which we answered.
Thank you very much, best wishes, there's nothing here or on here. Doesn't say I'm in favor or I'm against, just ask if you expand the footprint, and then it says at the end, you meant anything very much, best wishes, I guess best wishes. So, is there anyone else? Speak in favor? Third call, call it out here and close. I have a letter here from the DPW, we reviewed the above our project, we have no comments, if anyone opposed or undecided here? First call? Second call? Third call closed? On the motion, this case.
In, at number sixteen, dead, zero, five, three, Anthony Roman, for a finding to construct a second story on the front setback on premise number twenty-five Farrell Street, providing a motion to grant finding.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Close, come on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last on tonight's agenda, Scott Distin Levine, for variance to construct a second-story dorm on one setback, construct a side addition on premise number seventeen Wampa Town.
I'm the architect, maybe, I'm...
Address, honey?
Uh, in Milton, one forty-seven School Street, Milton.
Scott, seventeen Wampa, Lindsay.
Yes, similarly, seventeen Wampa.
You got a set of plans here, I bet you just want to put some dorms up there, and...
Right, looking for an addition on the second floor that, um, extends the existing issues, um, dormer and the back going up a little bit more, right, same situation, they're only fourteen-nine feet from the front.
They keeping the same, same roof line?
Same roof line, pretty much, except for the back, we're, we're popping up a little bit, just to get the head and back there.
Right.
So we talked to the building department, and I'm sure there's certain things in the rest of the house that we're managing in terms of a little pop-out towards...
I like the way you designed it.
No, thank you.
That's really neat.
The chemistry of the most familiar, with the new...
No, it's more true.
For home, they had a crazy...
No, the guy's gonna stick here, they're gonna...
Probably one of the lowest houses on the...
We can watch, yeah.
We don't know your front porch.
There's a little portico in the front that we're trying to add, just to add some entry feature to it, so that comes out a little bit, but again, it's not, the poster, it's just coming out the front.
Off the roof, in my pot?
From the front, at the front end for yourself, yeah, but, um, I think that's...
It's not, right, no.
It's not, yeah.
I have no questions.
Anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, if you have a seat, is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? First call, second call?
Wait a second.
Third call closed? I have a letter here from the DPW, we reviewed the above our project, and I have no comments, as Mr. Duke has said, Margaret LaFaris is in favor of this project, she called me tonight, told me that she'd like to see you build that home, and she's not gonna have kids, and we talked about Shenning Street, but, uh, she was in favor of that, and I'll be in favor of that. No comments? Uh, is there anyone, anyone opposed or undecided, first call, second call? Third call closed? On the motion?
The man of sixteen, dead, zero, five, four, Scott Distin Levine, for a variance to construct a second story, to construct second story dorms on the front setback, to construct a side addition on the premises number seventeen Wampa Park, round, if Lindsay McMurdo requires a variance.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, in favor?
Aye.
Close, come on.
Thank you very much.
On the motion?
Yes, first, we close.
Duke, turn.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, in favor? Are you, are you a party, sir?
Yeah.
For building wealth?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, hang on a moment, yeah.
I'm tired of it.